I'd like to call our meeting to order. And will you please arrive, rise for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. Today's invocation we've offered by Pastor Rich LaBelle. At Great Rich Community Church in Milford. Good evening.
Good evening.
If you'd like to come up to the podium, please.
Today's invocation we've offered by Pastor Rich LaBelle. At Great Rich Community Church.
I apologize. Sorry. It's like a phone going off in our service. And he doesn't want to take one, say, "Shut off your radio."
I can preach over that. Let's all pray together. Heavenly Father, we come together tonight. And Lord, as concerns are discussed and issues talked about and decisions made. All those, Lord, knowing that they affect people and affect the welfare of this city, Lord, I pray, God, for our city officials, that tonight you would just give them great wisdom and understanding to deal with what needs to be dealt with, to bring further peace and prosperity to this city, Lord. And I pray that you'd bless each one of them. And I pray this would be a fruitful meeting, that everything would be done decently and in order, God. So right now, Lord, fill this room with your presence and bless each one here. And we ask that in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. And if you'll join us for the pledge, please.
A pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice our own.
Good evening. Have the clerk please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Trustee Petrucci?
Here.
Trustee Harper?
Here.
Trustee Jermaine?
Here.
Trustee Kalani?
Here.
Treasure Horning?
Here.
Clerk Hopkins here. Supervisor Foughton?
Here.
We have cornered the board. We also have present Township Manager, James Wickler.
Thank you. Item number five is approval of our meeting agenda.
Support?
Motion by Trustee Petrucci, second by Trustee Kalani. Any discussion? Be none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. And item number six is called with the public. Anybody to call the public this evening? Good evening. If you'd like to come forward, please.
Good evening. My name is David Dunville. I'm from Boy Scout Troop 381. I'm here tonight to present my Eagle Project. Exactly what Eagle Project is, Eagle Scout is the highest rank you can get as a Boy Scout. In order to do that, you need to do a community service project that will benefit or help your community. So I come here tonight to present my Eagle Project to you and hoping to get it approved. As you see in front of you, there's a paper of an overview map of the Hero Board Building, the former Township Hall. My Eagle Project that I am planning, I am planning on building a basketball court for the Heartland X-14 Center. And the highlighted squares are possible places where the basketball court could be at.
David's just a little bit nervous.
Sorry. That's okay.
I'm David's, one of David's Scout Masters. I'm also his Eagle Advisor. He's asked me to help him. We met with the Hero Board last month or a couple of weeks ago or something like that. I don't remember exactly when. And talked with them about David's possible project. The intent is for this body to, because they own the property and the facilities, to basically, you know, agree with that. If they agree with that, then David will start taking the steps to develop that project. He will then come back to the Hero Board with a project of what he's going to do and how he's going to do it. And then from there, I'd assume we'll also have to go through Township Approval, Township Board Approval and your approval. I would suspect that by doing this, that a site plan will be developed. One of the other hats that I wear other than scouting is that I'm a professional engineer and surveyor. So I will be helping him with putting those site plans together and things like that.
Thank you. It sounds great. Does any board members have any questions or comments? You'll be working with probably Dave Campbell, our Planning Director, perhaps even Bob West, our DBW Director. And I'm sure they'll be more than happy to assist and give you direction as your project goes forward and also working with the Hero Board. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Very much. Good job.
Anybody else this evening that called to the public? Be none, item number seven is approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Support?
Motion by Treasure Hornings, second by Trustee Harper. Any discussion? Be none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. And pending business this evening, we have item number eight, A, is a dangerous building enforcement hearing. We had postponed this at our last meeting to let the applicant get some more information that was requested. Do we want to start with Dave Campbell, or I want to start with that? Is it William, correct? Is it?
Is this a public hearing or no? Do we need to open a public hearing or no? No.
So we had to ask for two or three different items at our last meeting. One was, I believe, the direction that the applicant wanted to, the choice either to build it, to make it safe or to demolish it. Those were the, we were looking for some direction. So David, if you could enlighten us as to where we are in the process.
Sure. So my understanding of the outcome of the hearing that we had on September 3rd that we adjourned until tonight was you were looking for answers to three questions. One is a question for the applicant, like you just mentioned, what is their intent, whether it's to demolish the building or rehabilitate it. I have not heard directly from the applicant of what their choice is on that. And I'm hoping they can answer that question for all of us here tonight. The two other questions were for myself and my department. One was you asked that we reach out to the mortgage holder on the property and do what we can to notify them of the impending enforcement hearing and what the possible outcomes of it may be. Myself and my department have made every reasonable effort that we could think of to do so and have made some progress, you know, via a series of calls and emails. We've let the loan servicing company, made them aware of what's happening. And the response thus far is, we'll get back to you within 10 business days. And that was, I think, two business days ago that we got that response. I also made a phone call to that company and spoke to someone who told me that because I'm not the account holder nor am I authorized to speak on behalf of the account holder, that they couldn't discuss any of this with me. And I did my best to let them know why I was calling and what our intent was. And he said, "Sir, I can't discuss that matter with you." And that was kind of the end of that conversation. So at this point, the mortgage holder, or at least the loan servicer, has been made aware and the appropriate office is supposed to give us written, a written response within 10 business days, which was two business days ago. So hopefully within the next eight business days. The other thing that the board asked me to look into was to confer with the Township Attorney to determine what, if any, priority. If the Township Board were to take the approach of demolishing the property at the Township's expense and if the property owner were not to reimburse the Township for the cost of that demolition, what if any priority would a lien on the property for that, the cost of that demolition? What if any priority would that take over any other liens on the property? I did get a response from the Township Attorney on that and that response was included in your packet. My understanding of that response is that it would not necessarily take priority over any other liens on the property, if there are any. One option that the Township Board may have, if that were to occur, is the Township Board could then seek a court order to place liens not only on the subject property but also any other real property in the state of Michigan that's owned by the property owner. And that may be one additional way that the Township may see a recoup of the, whatever funds are used to demolish the building, should we take that approach. So I'm hoping that the property owners' representatives, who I know are in the audience this evening, can let us know what they want to do with the building. But as far as updates from my end, that's the extent of it.
Good. Thank you. Mrs. Them and William, would you like to come forward? Let us know what you, what you kind of, direction you had compared to where we left at our last meeting?
Would you like to personally talk to you guys?
Sure.
Good evening, sir.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you put the microphone by, please? Thank you.
Yes, sir, we can.
They can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. We have told you guys, as we stated in the letter at the last meeting, when I'm old enough to retire, I'm moving back up there. I'm going to restore the property, restore the house and live in it. Since that time, we've made it secure. Everything's boarded up. Now, I initially boarded everything up from the inside or had Billy do it from the inside of the house. I figured aesthetically that looked better than from the outside boarded over. The house is secure. You cannot get in it. There's a chain across the drive. You can't drive up in the driveway. I don't know what else you want me to do, so you can't say it's not a dangerous building. Your, the one that you took out to look at the place and to decide whether it's a dangerous building or not, says right in an email to me that it is structurally sound and can be remodeled, redone. So at this point, I'm not going to sink money into it. I've got another 10 years before I can retire. I'm not going to sink money into it and just keep going through the same thing. When it looked good, it draws everybody there and everybody wants to break in and steal everything they can. They stole the siding off it, they demolished my house on me. Until I can move back up there and be there to take care of it myself, I'm going to keep it secured, I'm going to keep it boarded up where nobody can get in the thing. As far as anything out in the backyard or out in the fields that you can't see from the road, that's my property, that's my business. That ain't got nothing to do with this. I know there's junk out back. They were dumping stuff out there. When I went to school, I had to leave and go to school and come back because the house got originally broke into. As far as it being abandoned, there's no such thing as abandonment in the state of Michigan. We already went through that in court with the people that I caught breaking into it and stole half my stuff that was in there. State of Michigan claims there's no such thing as abandoned property. It belongs to somebody. Not when you know it belongs to me because you keep sending me the stuff about it. I keep talking to you about it. I don't know what else you want me to do. Now, I got a complaint because we boarded everything up and made everything sound where you can't get in the thing, but because I used scrap wood on the one window. Well, I'm sorry. My wife's been very ill. She's still pretty ill. There's a lot going on and I live 1,100 miles away right now. I might have, I had him use whatever he could get a hold of to board it up. As I can afford it and as I can send the money up and as Billy's got time, if you want the outside of the windows sheeted, sheeted up, I will do that. But as far as making that house look like it did in 2007 when I left, or 2009, I mean, when I left, it's not going to happen until I can move back up there. Because I'm not just going to have them keep tearing shit up and taking it and redoing this and redoing it and redoing it. I don't know what you guys want me to do to say it's not a dangerous building. It's been boarded up, it's been secured. Yeah, the last meeting, we were supposed to get a list of what you wanted done. Nobody has ever sent me a list or Billy Plummer a list, my son-in-law, future son-in-law, a list of what else they want done. Everything's been boarded, everything's secured. We put a cable across, a chain across the drive. We put no trespassing signs on the property again. What do you want me to do?
Mr. West, did you get the gentleman here a list of, as we requested at the end of our last meeting? I mean, I'm sorry, Dave Campbell.
Yeah, what we provided to Mr. Plummer and to Mr. Them was all the documentation that we, we sent them all the documentation that they've got through the years on this matter.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Let's back up. What do you mean through the years?
Well, this has gone back to code violations that started as far back as 2011.
No, the window was broken into one time when it got broken into. I boarded that up myself and then re-broke into it. So don't say it was ignored.
Sir, have you seen the letter?
Because it wasn't ignored.
Sir, have you seen the letter dated July 11th? Sir, have you seen the letter dated July 11th?
Have you seen a letter dated?
Have you seen the letter that has all the existing issues, that has animals living in the house?
I'm willing to work with you any way that I can. I don't want to see anybody go into that building and get hurt.
Sir, I asked you, I just asked.
Like I said, as far as making it look like a nice house, that's not going to happen right now.
Sir, I asked you a question.
Hold on a second. He's trying to ask you something.
I'm asking you a question. Did you receive the letter dated July 11th, 2013, where our inspector went to the home and looked at it from the outside and wrote down several elements? There's animals living in the house as of July 11th. There's windows that weren't, there's a whole list. My question is, have you received that letter?
No. Not 2011, I didn't.
No, July.
July 11th, 2013.
I got a code violation, yeah.
Everything, everything that we.
I took care of it.
Everything that we wanted to have happen to secure that building is listed in that letter.
I never got a letter listing. I got summons to appear in court for a code violation. I had to call two or three times to find out what it was. I couldn't make the court date and I got fined in court. I paid the $200 court cost and boarded up the window. That's all that I knew at that time. Now, I've told you guys who originally got a hold of me that I will work with you any way I can. Since then, we have made sure that everything is boarded up. When you start getting nitpicky because I used scrap wood over a window, it's getting a little bit ridiculous. Until I can take care of the mortgage on that property, there's nothing I can do. My hands are tied. If you take that building down and it causes me to lose the rest of my property, that's not going to be nice.
Sir, we're trying to hear this home, so it's not.
I'm trying to keep it closed up. I'm trying to keep it boarded up where nobody can get in it. My future son-in-law is living right down the road in my other house. They keep an eye on it every day. They drive past it, they look, make sure nobody's in there.
William, did you?
I don't know what else you want me to do.
Did you get a copy of the letter that had a checklist of things that had to be?
I have a checklist. The only ones that I received, when they're talking about us not being able to get the emails back and forth, and then one with a link to look at the meeting from last time on the computer, and then one that had the pictures that he gave me a hard copy of. Those are the emails that I received.
I just, I thought it was pretty clear that we wanted to make sure that all that information was given to him.
And we did. Every, every letter has been sent to Mr. Them via certified mail and has been posted to the door of the property. I gave Mr. Plummer before we left here on the 3rd. I gave him everything that was in the packet that you had before you. I gave him my hard copy of the packet and told him I would email to him. One of the things he asked for was being able to look at the video of the meeting from September 3rd. So I sent him the link to our site where the video is available to be viewed also on that link. And I made it clear to Mr. Plummer, was there, you can click on the attachment for the agenda packet and that was all available. I sent that link more than once. I copied Mr. Them on those emails where I said, "Here's the link to the video."
I haven't been able to open that video. I'm having trouble getting it to come up. But I figured that must be what it is. Yeah, it's like my wife just said, the only thing we've got in the mail certified is a letter telling us about this meeting.
If I could direct the board to the Hearing Officer, Mr. Summerfield's letter of July 24th, which is in your packet, where it's his determination of what needs to be done if this property, if this issue is not to proceed to an enforcement hearing before the board. And his order in bold lettering says, "The home totally boarded up securely with sheathing on the outside of the glass windows and doors." His follow-up letter dated August 13th, where he finds that there was a non-compliance with his order, points to the fact that there were several openings still remaining in the building and that the property was boarded up over some, most of the windows, but the boarding was on the inside. And the key there is that the boarding, the sheathing was meant to be on the outside to protect the glass that was in the remaining glass windows, so that, you know, a rock or whatever else wouldn't get thrown at a glass window and do further damage. So the fact that there were some remaining openings to the building and the fact that the sheathing was on the inside and on the outside is why Mr. Summerfield came to the determination that it was non-compliant with his order of July 24th. So when the question is, what more could they have done? The answer is, they could have complied with Mr. Summerfield's order of July 24th and boarded the house up from the outside in a manner consistent with his order.
And further, that the order, that's the interim step. The Hearing Officer's order found that whatever was going to be done, whether demolition or rehabilitation, that that needed to be followed up on now and not 10 years from now. That the sheathing and securing of the building was just the interim step until.
It froze, Katie.
Till a final resolution could happen in pursuing demolition permit or proper permits to have the house repaired now. And our concern isn't just regarding the security of the building, although that is certainly a large one. There are other, there are a number of factors that have led us to this point, many of which are also related to blatant nuisance ordinances that we have. We see no, nothing constructive in trying to pursue multiple ordinance violations at once, all things considered. This is clearly falls under the dangerous building statute for Michigan and should be addressed as such. If for some reason we get to a point where the board is satisfied that is no longer considered a dangerous building, we will still have countless other blatant nuisance violations that we will have to spend time on. And I've already spent more than two years trying to get resolution to and have not gotten resolution to. Our goal is not to write tickets or have fines paid. Our goal is to have properties in compliance with the ordinances and despite our best efforts, that has not happened.
It's the pleasure of the board at this point.
If I may, just the staff recommendation remains to enforce the order of the dangerous building Hearing Officer, who is qualified in this area and understands construction and building issues. And in his letter of July 24th, which you've read, has laid out what really would need to be done in order to rehabilitate that and has raised reasonable questions about the salvageability of that structure. Our recommendation is to enforce that. That decision this evening is not a decision to, for this board to incur any expense to have the building demolished. It is an order upon the property owner to have the building demolished within the timeframe of 60 days. And then if that's not done, then the Township has the discretion to carry that out. In that timeframe, we can continue to do our due diligence and answer questions about securing the cost of that, of any demolition or any action the Township may make on that. And so knowing that, you know, we still have time to answer the board's questions in that regard, we would remain with our recommendation to enforce the order as it's laid out. We also have, we have a number of options there. And even after the 60 days have passed, it could be that the board may choose not necessarily to take that enforcement action right away or to seek court judgment of some sort, as the attorney had noted is one of the options as well. So all those options we can look at after an action tonight that holds up and/or modifies the Hearing Officer's order.
Sir, this started quite a few months ago and we asked for two weeks from our last hearing so we could gather some additional information. Is there any reason that the requests were ignored until this point? There was a, on 5/28, there was a host of elements that our inspector saw. Is there any reason that it was neglected or nobody did anything about it until now? Is it a concern?
Can you hear him?
David Lee?
Oh, my God.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm trying to hear. It's kind of garbly on this end.
Sir, is there any reason that you waited about four more months? When the letters first started going out in May 28th, there was a whole list of elements that were asked to be done and they were ignored?
And I was working on them at the time. In between that time, my wife's been in and out of the hospital at least three times since then. My son-in-law's been sick. He's been working 70, 80 hours a week. I can't go up there and do this stuff myself. We asked that this be put back until November when I have vacation time again and can make it up there. I can't afford to lose any more work. I have down to one vacation day and that's for the next hospital appointment. We've closed up everything that we can. I mean, I want to know why you're saying it's not, it's not secure. Now, the last meeting, what I seen, the video of the meeting, when you were asked, they sent me a letter back saying that the cellar wasn't been closed up, but just half a sheet of plywood thrown on top of it, by, on top. Nobody checked it. The thing is, I'm their solid. I don't know what else you want me to do. You want me to put concrete over the top of it? I mean, come on. The kid used 30 nails in the thing. You're not going to go up there, you're not going to lift it off. I mean, anything. I can make a block wall and if you want to get into it bad enough, you're going to get into it. Everything is closed up. Everything is secure on that house. Now, I understand that it's not the greatest looking house. It makes me sick to see what that house has gotten into, what it was where my mother lived, where I grew up there. But I'm not going to put a lot of meat into it. I'm not going to make it look like that again until I can be up there and do it myself. A lot of the work I'm going to do myself. I don't know what else you want me to do to say that it's secure. Everything's closed up. As things get opened up or somebody tries to get in, we'll close it up. We've called the cops. Cops can't do nothing about it because I'm not standing there. So, you know, I don't know where you want me to go with this. That is the house that I grew up in, the house my grandparents owned. I will remodel that house and live in it when I'm retired and finish out my years. I'll probably die in it just like my mother did. But I said, I don't know what you want me to do, why you say it's not secure, why you say it's not. do, why you say it's not a secure, why you say it's not a safe building.
Did you see the-
Not get into the building.
Sir, did you, did you see the pictures that were given to us and-
Boarding it up on the inside, that's my fault. I thought it would look better if it was all sheeted from the inside instead of the outside. Evidently that's wrong. I will take and sheet over the outside as I can afford to, if you want me to. I don't think that, to me, that don't look as good from the inside. But that, that's what you want, I will do it that way. But it's going to take time and I don't have a lot of money right now. So as I can, I'll send up some money. They'll buy some wood. They'll sheet over the outside for me. It's not sitting in a million dollar hump subdivision. This is, the house sits out in the country. I'm 40 acres that I own. It's not like it's sitting in the middle of town someplace. Now, I understand, I, heaven forbid, I never want to see anybody go in there and get hurt, but it ain't no different than somebody can go in the woods across the road and get hurt or murdered and you're not over there telling them they got to clear cut that wood so you can see across it. Bad things happen in the world and I just hope it never happens there that I have to have it on my conscience. We have got people looking at it every day, making sure nobody's in there. My daughter, my son-in-law lives right down the road from it, so they go by it every day and look at it.
Does your daughter drive by it every day too?
I've got, yeah. I've got neighbors and everything else that drive by and keep an eye on it for me. I, I don't know what you want me to do with it. Any further than what I've already done.
Again, there was a, there's a, a large list of items that were, were sent that covered a lot of the issues that, that apparently you're unaware of.
Uh, he's aware. He's aware. He just doesn't want to do it.
So my question still goes back to, there's been a, a whole year gone by since I, you know, looked a little deeper into the records of the first, the first time that was a year ago in August. And it's been a whole year and really nothing has changed. So what kind of-
Yeah, keep boarding it up. Wouldn't mean nothing's changed. It keeps getting broken into. They had a door on there at one time. We made sure the door was locked. We put extra locks on it. Then they kicked the door and they took the door. Cause it was a steel door. That's, they sold it for scrap along with the aluminum. So then we take, we sheet it over. Somebody else breaks in, we sheet over again. Right now, everything is sheeted over and closed up. You cannot get in it. And at the time, at the time up until about three, four months ago, while I would say six, eight months ago, I didn't have Mr. Plummer living there. Since that time, my daughter and him have gotten engaged. He's going to be my son-in-law. So he's there on the property. He's taking care of it for me, closing it up for me as something needs to be done. Until that point, I didn't have that. I had somebody I thought was taking care of it and wasn't doing what they were told or what they told me they were doing.
Sir, have you seen, have you seen the pictures taken of your-
November, that house was closed up.
Sir-
I went and closed up the windows myself.
Sir, have you seen the pictures that, that we have access to that were taken on July, I think 11th, July 12th, to show large gaping holes in, in portions of the home where animals are coming in and out? Have you seen those pictures? Has, has-
Have you been out and looked at the house and see if any animals can get in it again? Everything's closed up. Everything on that house is closed.
Are the porches on the, uh, sides closed or can people get into the porches as well?
Porches are not closed up now.
It's a porch. It wasn't closed before. It wasn't closed when I lived there. There's a pre-season porch that my grandmother had built on the west side of the house that obscured the aluminum windows on it. The porch on the east side of the house is a screened-in porch that never was closed up. So you, you gotta say I gotta close up the porch so nobody can step up on the porch? Is that what you want?
Well, you keep on saying, asking that there's nothing dangerous about this building. Those porches are dangerous. Yes. Weather gets in there. It does never get removed. It rains in, it snows in. It does never get cleaned out. Yes, those things are dangerous. They're under roof. The structures that are holding them up are dangerous.
So we take down the overhangs over the porches? That fixes the problem? It's no different than if somebody walks out of my house while we're at the shore and throws a rock at the window. It's still going to break. Whether it was boarded up from the outside to inside, it's no different than any other house on that road that has a window. If the kid's going to break a window, he's going to break the window. Whether it's on an abandoned house or a house that's lived in and-
Well, I would imagine there's a lot of people living on that road that would think that there's a far cry of difference between this house and the house they're living in.
Right. But if a kid wanted to break the window, it wouldn't matter-
We're not talking about just a broken window here.
Then that's why you want to board it up from the outside? So people can't break the windows?
We wanted it secured so, yes, the people couldn't get into it and-
They can't get into it.
But there's more than just that. There's more than just securing it from people getting in. This building is the roughest sagging.
That roof's completely sagged. All 260 pounds, I'll jump it up and down on it. If it's going to hold that up, it's going to hold anything on it.
Bruce had, had a swat in it for 50 years that I've been alive.
And now we're expected that it's going to sit here for another 10 years with nothing being done to it, other than it being boarded up.
It's going to stay boarded up and closed up until I can move back up there. I mean, if you want me to take the porches off, I'll take the porches off. And when I come up in November, I will take the porches off of it. For what? I don't know why, but I will take the porches off of it. You cannot get in the house from the porch. Every door, every window on that house, they boarded up from the inside, like I requested it done originally. Like I said, if you guys want it done from the outside, from my understanding, when I was up there in November, there wasn't a hell of a lot of windows left in it. But if you want them closed over from the outside, I told you, either as I can send money up, they'll buy wood, they'll sheet over the outside of it. I don't know what else, other than looks. And like I said, I know it doesn't look great. Other than that, I don't know how you can say it's a dangerous building because you can't get into it. Now, can somebody break into it? Yeah. You give me a sledgehammer, give me a chainsaw, anything like that, I can get into any building. But to get in that building, you cannot get into that building. I could get in a neighbor's house better than you could get in mine. So I, I, like I said, I want to work with you guys. I don't want, I don't want to go through all this. But I'm not going to put that house back the way it looked in 2009 until I can live there and make sure it doesn't happen again. I mean, I can't rebuild this thing every year, every two years till I can refit it.
Sir, you stated that you want to work with the township and I think it's, it's in your best interest also that it's secured so nobody gets hurt. My concern is that we have tried in the past to work with you and you-
It can't be any time.
If you'd let me just try to finish my thought here. We have tried to work with you for at least a year and we've gotten, gotten really nothing.
No, it hasn't been a year. I'm sorry. I'm having trouble with that. A year ago, I got a letter from your enforcement officer saying that an upstairs window was missing. When I came up in November, I took care of it. Evidently-
Could you let me finish, please? Sir, would you let me finish, please?
And I never took care of it. And I ended up going into court and paid a fine for that.
Would you let me finish, please?
Since then, I made sure it was closed up again. Why?
Hold on a second.
Sir, we're, we're here to try to resolve an issue, but there is a dangerous building on your property and there are issues that have to be resolved. You say you need more time. We have been working on this for, for at least a year, if not more than a year, and we've gotten nowhere. And now you're pleading like we haven't discussed anything with you. How do we contact you and how do we communicate with you so we can get this resolved? How, how can we work, how can, how can we work together with you?
Mr. Campbell's got my phone number and my email address, got my home address, got my home phone number. I'll give it to anybody who wants it. What do you want? You want all of them?
Well, then you've gotten the information and then-
My daughter sits right there. Got all the information how to get all of it. She'll give any one of you whatever you want.
So my question is that you, you stated that you haven't received any of the information that we've gotten. So my question is if we try to find a resolve to this as we go forward, we obviously have the wrong address, the wrong email address and the wrong telephone number. Because you're not, you're not, you're stating that you hadn't received the information that would correct the problem.
I'm stating, I'm telling you what I have received. Now, what these guys are telling you, you've sent, sent me, I don't know where it went because I didn't get it. I've got emails from Mr. Campbell when this started. I got, talked to him on a conference call and got emails from him on a meeting back in July, I think it was. But he, he sent me emails. He sent me emails on the last one. He sent me Mr. Summerfield's report on his recommendations and his understa- uh, what do I want to say?
So you have received the information.
Proposal of the building.
You have recently received the information that we were looking to resolve the problem. You have the information.
I have a letter, certified letter from you guys stating that this meeting was going on tonight. I have went by what you got in my emails, the pictures you sent me and what the house looked like before, what the house looked like now. I know what this looks like. I have not got a definite letter or any list that says, this needs to be done, that needs to be done, this needs to be done, this needs to be done. I was up closing everything up and you want the junk in the backyard, office, but this here, I mean, what's out back in that field and in that yard is my business. If you can't see from the yard, that ain't none of everybody else's business. I have closed up everything on the house. I boarded up all the windows. Everything's closed up. There's no animals getting in it. There's no human getting in it. What else do you want me to do?
Well, sir, sir, couches in your front yard is, is, is blight. All right? Let's call it what it is.
You can't see them, couches from the road.
It doesn't matter. Okay? It doesn't matter. Blight on the property is, is, is a concern of the township. Blight is like having a couch on your, on your property.
Grass too tall.
Grass too tall. Piles of garbage. That's blight.
Who's to tell us how tall our grass can be?
It depends on where it's at. If it's not around the house and if it grows like that, yeah, that, that is considered blight around a hopstead. We have an ordinance that addresses that. You know, it's, it's, there's a law, okay, that addresses these things.
This is, you can't have a couch in your backyard.
It's considered blight. Did you see the pictures of it?
That weren't taken.
Well, I know for-
It doesn't have to be taken, sir. It doesn't have to be taken from there.
Hold on, hold on here, people. I know for a fact, because I'm getting charged for it, that the mortgage company has got a tie going out there mowing that lawn every couple weeks, once a week and then when it's really growing and every couple weeks when it slows down. So how much are you saying I got to cut? Are they not cutting enough? You, what do you want? An acre, two acres? When I lived there, I used to cut three acres of grass. I'm not going to do that anymore under that. I'm not taking care of three acres of lawn. I mean, what you, how, what do you say how much and how long? I'm not going to run, I told them not to run a lawn mower over there under six, eight inches because all this junk that's in the yard. People's dumped brick up there on me. People down around the lake has dumped a lot of stuff up there. Concrete, brick, boards, everything else in the back because, oh, it's a free spot to go dump. So I'm going to have them ruin their mower, going up there trying to mow that stuff? No.
Well, sir, there are things that go along with owning property, you know? Um, and I know it isn't easy and fun to have to take care of when you're so far away, but that's the choices you've made. Now, we have to make choices based on the way you're maintaining this property.
Like I said, this-
We have people who dump stuff on the roads within the township and we have to get that stuff cleaned up. We don't like to have to do it, but people do it and we have to get it cleaned up.
Now-
I would make, I would recommend that we, uh, we give this gentleman until the end of the year to resolve all the issues on Mr., uh, Campbell's list.
But I would appreciate, but I would like the list of all the issues.
We will. We'll have the whole list to you and you have until the end of the year to get them resolved. So that's, that's, uh, and this, that's just, that's my, uh-
I'll have time. I can come up there.
So then what we're saying is that they boarded up, they clean up and we're fine with that? That what the dangerous building officer has said about the condition of the building and it need to be, to be taken down, we're not going to deal with that portion of it?
No, that's not what I said. The, the list of issues will be brought to the attention of-
Well, the list of issues isn't everything that the, the dangerous building officer has ruled.
That was just-
The dangerous building officer said that the building, that he needs to pull permits for destruction or renovation.
No, whoa, 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 no. Now, why is he saying I got to tear it down when the shaking, when you're a dangerous building officer said that that building is salvageable? That building can be redone.
The dangerous building officer says it needs to be torn down or rehabilitated. That's what the dangerous building officer says. But there's a timeframe, there's a timeframe and it isn't 10 years.
Put it up and closed up and cleaned up a little bit. I, yes, I can get that done. Now, if you want me to take next summer when the weather permits, or I'm even doing this fall when I come up. You want me to put a coat of paint on it outside of it? I'll put a coat of paint on it outside of it. But I'm not putting siding back on it to get ripped off again. I'm not going to put a lot of money into that house until I can be there and do it. I'm going to keep that house closed up. I'm going to keep that house secure. If you want some of the stuff cleaned up outside where it looks a little bit nicer, we can work on that. I told you this. I'm willing to work with you. But as far as putting that house back to the condition that it was when I left, that's not going to happen until I can move there.
Well, sir, the list that I'm referring to is a lot more than putting wood over some windows. There, and I'm just going to read a couple of them that are real concerns. There's a large opening in the crawl space in the northwest corner. Animals are living underneath the house.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
But sir-
Let's dress that for it now. That is a porch.
I, I don't want to argue about this.
There's never been nothing over that. If it's open underneath it, why are you going to make me put something over it now? It's been that way for my whole life. It does not go into the house. That is a porch across that front. It does not go into the structure of the house at all. It does not go in the basement. It does not go inside the house. There was an added on porch that it's been there my whole life. Next.
Can I get into this?
Give us your name and your address.
Could you repeat that?
Charles Horner.
Okay, thank you.
You guys aware of the situation since 2008 of where this country has gone? Uh, that gentleman up there, Mr. Wickman, how many times have you taken a pay cut in the past eight years? And Campbell, how many times have you taken a pay cut in the past? What was forced on to people all over Michigan was they had to go out of state to get work. And that's what his hardship is. He's out of state. And I didn't see anybody going down to the, like the police department. They go out there, they can't do nothing. Why you guys sit up here, want the, want the, demolish the man out and, and you're responsible for that house? When you're, when it's out there, somebody's supposed to be watching it unless he hires a bodyguard. out there, somebody's supposed to be watching it unless he hires a bodyguard. But a patrol car should be going up and down there all the time on his shift just to have something to do, to be checking on that house, make sure none of them's vandalized. I know several houses that are empty, and nothing's being done to them. And user made a remark about the grass. This thing is growing further than a cow pasture, and nobody's saying nothing about it. Not this house, another house. And I'm not complaining about it. The only thing I'm saying is, that house is totally unsecured out there, and nobody's doing nothing about it. Yet, because somebody on this road, Reed Road, is complaining about this house, it's an eyesore, or something going on there. And I think since all this has happened, and he had to go out of state in order to support his family and try to make the mortgage payment.
With all due respect, we've all have people in our families that have been affected by the economy. We're all citizens of this township. So, you know, I think you're being highly critical of what this proceeding is when you don't know all the facts.
Oh, yes, I do, sir.
Well, if you do know all the facts, you would be remiss to see all, how long this progress has been going on. I've been sitting here looking at the list that goes back to, the dating goes back to 2011.
I hear him going back to-
What I'm saying is-
That was you. It's already been-
Sir, I'm not here to argue with you. I'm not here to argue with you, but I'm just going to point out, this isn't something that just happened over the last three months, six months, or a year. People have a responsibility to take care of the property. We also have an obligation. Excuse me, let me finish.
All of them.
We have an obligation. We pass ordinances. Why bother having an ordinance on our file if we don't enforce it?
No, there's no law around here anyway, because how many-
Sir, we're not talking about that. We're talking about the ordinance that's in place right now.
Yeah. All the houses have been vandalized, and nobody's doing nothing about it, and they end up in situations like this.
My point I'm trying to make, sir, sir, I think our planning department have shown compassion. They've given plenty of time. And I'll be honest with you, this hearing we gave two weeks because we also showed compassion as what we needed. There's a letter from July 24th lists very clearly what all the conditions that need to be satisfied. What I understand, what I'm sitting here listening to right now, is Mr. Them wants to argue about each, wants to argue about the factual circumstances that are on that letter. My problem with that is, Mr. Them isn't here to see-
There you go.
He isn't here. He needs to come up here and take care of his property.
And he loses his jobs down there.
Well, you know what, sir? If you, sir, you know what, if you go down the road and you drink and drive, you could lose your job, right? There's a lot of reasons for losing your job. But when the law has to be enforced-
How are you gonna live?
Sir, if you break the law, you gotta take care of the situation. He's breaking the law. So, do we look blindly on that? Just answer that question. Should we take a blind eye to someone breaking the law? I'm talking about this circumstance.
In cases like this?
Okay. Here's the situation. Here's what we're, we have shown compassion during this entire situation. The township has given him plenty of time to deal with the situation. He has not once come up here and taken care of the problem in two years, over three, almost three years.
Do you not hear where he's at?
But wait.
No, 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 no. Wait a minute, timeout.
Okay.
Now, originally, when I got in contact with you guys, it was on July 24th, and I was given to August 5th to do all this. Now, I've explained the situation. Two weeks' time? You're gonna tell me I gotta do this from 1,100 miles away in two weeks' time?
Sir, I'm gonna ask you one more time. Did you-
Now, I'm sorry that I had to move out of state to get a job, since my wife's become ill.
I'd like to-
We've got a lot going on, and I understand.
Sir, I'd like to call a meeting order, please. Please. This is becoming fruitless, our discussion at this point. Gentleman says he hasn't received the information. This goes back two years. He's stating that he hasn't seen anything, but he has, let me finish, sir.
Where does this go back to? Because that's what I wanna know.
Well, that's why we're putting a line in the sand, perhaps. And you do have all the information that you say you have. You have the list of items that are on there. And if you're sincere, as you say you are, you will work with our planning department and get those things resolved by the end of the year. That would be my recommendation. And you said you would be willing to do that.
I agree with that. I will be up there in November. I will be in and talk to you guys personally, in person.
And, sir, you have the list-
I'm running up there before that summer.
If you would let me finish, please. Let me finish. You have the list of items. The list of items are larger than what you think they are.
I can consider the list of items. I have some emails. The only thing I have got is what's on my emails and on my pictures. You sent me pictures. I will have to go back through. They're on my computer. I cannot access them right now while I'm talking to you. I'm gonna go back through and look.
That, I'd recommend.
You guys, what I'm asking from you guys tonight-
Well, first of all, if this is what the board is figuring, why you're staying at going to proceed.
Sir-
Can we mute that or something?
We can't hear you because he's talking.
Right.
Okay, go ahead now.
So, if the board wants to follow your recommendation, I mean, these letters go back way farther than the 24th of July of 2013. So, I would recommend that you direct him to have his family members come in here and get copies of all this stuff. And, I mean, we fulfilled our responsibility of letting him know, mailing it the way we're supposed to mail it. I understand that we, that people may feel that it didn't get to him, but he needs to take an effort, if you're gonna go this route, to make sure he has all this stuff. And us mailing it again to hear that he hasn't got it, or he doesn't get our emails, is fruitless, in my opinion.
But he's already said he doesn't have the money to do these things.
I understand. I'm not talking about what the final decision the board is. I'm just saying, if you're going this route, I think you better make sure that they come in and they get all this stuff, so that we don't hear anymore that he doesn't know everything that's on our list.
The list is not very long. Why not read the list to him right now?
Yeah.
I mean, it's a list from the hearing officer. It's about 15 items. And, I don't know. Dave, do you have that list in front of you? Can you make a copy for him and give it to him?
Are we speaking of the July 24th order? I believe he said he received that. He said the letter from Mr. Summerfield.
Excuse me, I don't understand. If he has the July 24th letter from Kelly Summerfield that lists the items that need to be done, is the issue he's arguing over what that list is, or what's on that list?
Stuff on that list is done.
That's not, that's not what we're hearing. The stuff on that list was not completed.
Can I get a copy? Make sure my daughter gets a copy of that. She can come up there tomorrow and pick it up, and she will get it to me.
They were giving a copy two weeks ago.
Now, I can explain to you, there's gonna be stuff on that list that I don't agree with, and we're gonna have to talk it over. Like you're saying, there's a hole under the porch on the west side. That has always been like that. There's nothing there. That's what I'm trying to make you understand. There is nothing that can get in there. I mean, there was stuff on the list just that I got from him like that. There's nothing I can do about that. What do you want me to do? Want a core footing underneath that? It's never been like that. I don't have to close that up. It's never been closed up. I will work on boarding it up if you want me to, but it's not gonna be any more than cosmetic. But if that's what you want, I'll do it. If you have an issue with the porches, with the porches being on the place, I'll take the porches off. I mean, I appreciate you talking about getting me to the end of the year, because this will give me a chance to come up there and talk to you guys in person myself. And we will keep it closed up, and we will work on sheeting it up between now and then, and checking off everything on this list. But I need to know why you're telling me point blank, it's a dangerous building. If it's a dangerous building because somebody could get inside of it, you can't get inside of it. Not without, I mean, total effort to get in. Somebody's gotta really want in there to get into it. And that can be in any building, any house. I mean, I can only outside it, blocking it, you could still get in it at that point. But I will work with you. I will address every issue you've got, but you've got to give me time. More than two weeks. That's the biggest thing that we're fighting about here. I've got in touch with them on August 24th. Last year with Mr., I don't know your enforcement officer's name. I can't remember. I know it starts with an S. I don't know how to pronounce it, I guess. To double that, he said I didn't. I closed it up. If it wasn't closed up, we went, he took it to court. I paid the fine. I made sure it was boarded back up. It wasn't boarded up to your satisfaction. I've made sure every window on the inside of that place was boarded up, where nobody can get into it. If there's an issue, if you drive by and you see something open, say, "Hey, looks like somebody's been in up there. Maybe my daughter or my son-in-law has acquired it." Stop into the house and tell them. They will take care of it. They will board it up. Make sure it's solid. They're keeping an eye on it for me now. As far as going back to 2011, I don't know what you're talking about. I have no idea. Last year was the first I talked to anybody up there on anything. And that was your enforcement officer when I got a summons saying that I had to appear in court. Prior to that, until May or July, whenever this was, that we start talking this spring, I have been working on it to the best of my ability. Give me a list. Tell me why this building's not sound. And we will see what we can address on it. I will have time. I agree I will come up in November. I will come to a meeting. I will gonna meet everyone in person. I don't care, however you wanna do it. But you have to give me some time.
Here's, I got a document. I just, I'm looking at it. It says, "On August 2nd, 2011, there was a site visit by our, someone from the township." That was in 2011. Dangerous building, house is abandoned, second floor window missing, open to elements, grass over six inches high. August 9th, 2011, warning letter sent to owner. September 19th, 2011, site visit, no change. September 22nd, 2011, site visit, no change. Tickets mailed to owner with cover letter. 9/28, 2011, Mr. Them called in reference to the letter he received. He is in Foley, Alabama, at the present time, and will be, and will be until sometime in November. He can be reached, and he gave, and there's a phone number for you. On September 29th, 2011, someone from the township called Mr. Them. I explained that the situation to him, asking that his house be sealed and the grass cut. He said he was in Alabama, and his daughter sent him the ticket. I told him he had to get the ticket taken care of now, and could not wait until the end of November. He said he would do so. October 4th, 2011, site visit, grass has been cut, window is still open, continue to monitor. April 12th, 2012, site visit, additional windows are broken on first floor. Second notice of violation sent to the owner with the letter. May 29th, 2012, site visit, no change, no response from owner. Grass is now over six inches tall. Civil infraction citation will be issued. June 5th, 2012, civil infraction citation issued, posted on door, pictures taken, and mailed to Mr. Them at 12356 Reed Road. June 13th, 2012, received from district court notice of informal hearing. June 16th, 2012, Mr. Them called from Alabama. He was told to contact the courthouse and request postponement because he was having surgery that week. He was also advised to have someone board the house and cut the grass. His daughter lives down the road, and people keep breaking into his house and stealing things. He lives in Alabama since 2009. Returned certified mail that was sent on June 28th, 2012. June 21th, 2012, received from district court notice of informal hearing, changed to July. July 23rd, 2012, informing hearing held. Mr. Them was not present. Magistrate issued a default judgment. Complaint filed. Dead animals in driveway, animals running in and out of house, property is unkept and falling down, siding is falling off, property is no fit for living, and continues to deteriorate. May 30th, 2013, site visit, house has deteriorated, pictures taken, dangerous building, hearing scheduled for July 11th. June 20th, 2013, notice for dangerous building hearing sent to owner. July 9th, 2013, notes from site visit, July 9th, dangerous building hearing scheduled for July 11th. This is the list of things. There's about 20 items that were listed in that July 11th hearing. Do you want me to go through them? I mean, at the end of the day, there's been considerable opportunity here in efforts to try and get this situation corrected, and time has been given to you over and over again. Two weeks ago, we also showed compassion to have something presented to this board that would tell this board that you're going to do something. Now, we're being told that you're not gonna take any action until you come back in November 9th, and actually, what I heard was, I don't plan on coming up for another 10 years. So, I don't know what else to do.
You asked for this, and you got a letter to my daughter, and my daughter come up and read it to you with our intentions. You keep asking me what my intentions are to do with this house. And I'm telling you what my intentions are. When I can retire, I plan on retiring and living in that house. I mean, I don't know what else you want me to tell you. I've boarded it up. I'll keep it secure, and I will keep it boarded up and secure. And I'm willing to work with you on any other issues that you got. But like I said, aesthetically, that house is not gonna look much different until I can move up there and do the work myself, and make sure that it stays done. Now, as far as when it started, I might be off. Might have been June that I talked to you guys. I don't know. There's a lot going on. Between now and then, I've had more carotid arteries, and my wife's been in and out of hospital, and we gotta go to Birmingham now with the hospital up there, which is four and a half hours away. So, I mean, there's a lot going on. I am willing to work with you guys. I will make it as presentable as I can. If you wanna sheet it over the outside of the window, just sheet it over the outside of the window. Like I said, when I contact you guys, tell you, well, it's boarded up, then I get an email back saying, "Well, you used scrap wood over the one window." You can't even see that window from the road. It's boarded up, secure, regardless of whether I use scrap wood or I use brick. I mean, come on, let's get a little bit realistic here. I ain't got a lot of money right now. As I can send it up, my son-in-law will board it up. He will shoot the outside of it like you guys asked. If you guys will give me till January, I'll be up there in November. I will keep working on these issues. As long as that house is secure and nobody can get into it, I don't know how you can say it's a dangerous building. As far as grass being longer than six inches, my lawn, when I lived up there, was longer than six inches, and nobody was stopping telling me I had to cut it. I mean, that's, I'm not sitting in a million-dollar neighborhood here, people. What I'm saying.
If it pleases the board, in the interest of time, I don't know if the board has any further need for questions of the owner, or if it'd like to just move deliberation toward the decision. If the board has a desired outcome that you could reach consensus on and/or a timeline, we could help frame what that looks like.
I've already shared my thoughts.
Does that have to be a motion, or what does that have to, what part does that have to do?
Well, we don't have a motion on the table right now. Nobody's moved to-
That's what I was asking, if this was-
I don't think we have a motion.
There's no motion on the table.
Bill's just suggesting that. What are you suggesting, Bill?
Well, there's still eight more days before the mortgage company's gonna get back with the township, according to Dave. Yeah, well, correct. So, there's, isn't that what you stated?
Yeah, what that response is gonna-
We don't know what that response is gonna be.
We don't know.
But, um-
Don't hold high expectations.
The gentleman said he's willing to work and get the things resolved. He's got the list. And those are the issues that need to be resolved.
You're gonna give the list.
He's got, he said he has the list.
I have pictures and an email stating how to see the website.
At the last meeting, you were given everything from the package, which included the list.
And you got it, yes?
There wasn't any list in there. It was just-
It's not a list. It's a letter with bullet points.
It's a letter.
It's a letter with bullet points, and David gave it to you, his whole packet.
Well, I read through the whole packet. It says to board up the windows, which we did.
A lot worse.
Is there...
Says that the house is structurally unsound, but yet, two months prior to that, they said that it was structurally sound and should be rebuilt.
Does the board have consensus on the recommendation of the supervisor? Are there, do we want to move towards?
The postponing, or, it's not the right word.
Tabling them.
Tabling this hearing for 90 days or something like that?
Well, I would have some recommendations. If the board wants to have a different set of conditions applied, my recommendation would be to then have the subsequent action decided here, lest we spend more time on this again in the future. If in fact, what we're offering is additional time, and that is the end of, you know, those conditions or the next step is taken, you can make the decision on those next steps. I would recommend that you do so, so we don't have to keep revisiting this issue. If the, so if we get clarification on the conditions, you'd like to have met by December 31st, if, is that the, because there's a couple different lists that are out there. If we can clarify what those are, and then if those conditions aren't met, then you can...
See, the applicant, our applicant, Mr. Them, works with the dangerous building inspector, Dave Campbell, to get the issues resolved, so it's no longer a dangerous building.
At the point?
At the point.
Or, all we have is the information that was given to us.
Sure.
From the last meeting. If there's things above and beyond that, or things that aren't on there anymore, I don't know what those are.
So what list are, is this the, so there's a July 11th memorandum to the dangerous building hearing officer with those bullet points. I think that those match, or should closely resemble what was put in the case file that was read off earlier. There is the order of the dangerous building hearing officer that was a little more succinct.
The one I have is July 11th, I believe.
Yeah.
There's some of our findings.
Yes.
Good.
So the board wishes to see all of those conditions resolved by December 31st.
What is the date of that letter again?
July 11th, 2013.
Could I add something to that? To keep any further destruction from going on to this house, since he is in Alabama and can't handle the situation? Then the sheriff's department, right up and down that road?
See, that is part of the problem, is that the home is not being lived in. That's what's caused...
Nope. It's being tore up. And I had that happen to me twice. And it's not a very nice thing. Now, if we have a sheriff's department, and they can, on their patrol, they got to drive a car. So why can't they just pass that house?
What needs to happen to the situation like that is every time that something like that happens, it needs to be reported to the police, because...
It does.
Well, then the sheriff...
They tell me, well, you can't do anything because you're not the homeowner.
Okay, well, then you have your future father-in-law make the phone call for you. Okay?
And they don't say that because he's not in front of them. They cannot make a police report.
He could send a letter. He could send an email. Police patrols are driven by complaints.
I'm there until when?
I'm sorry?
I'm just supposed to tie these people up and hold them sitting on the property until the cops get there?
No, you have to take, yeah.
You're supposed to be able to hold the cops?
If somebody's breaking in onto property, you could call the police, and they should...
At 2:00 in the afternoon.
They should respond. They should respond.
It's not working. Katie's not going to take four kids up to the cops.
It's not a debate. Okay, it's not a debate here.
Let's get back onto the point of what we're trying to achieve here.
So, so far, meeting the conditions of the planning department memo of July 11th, meeting that by December 31st. My recommendation then is to determine what happens after that date, when those conditions are met.
Well, there's some things, if we're going this route, I think that they need to meet with the dangerous building officer. And the dangerous building officer, if there can be a, because I think there's a list that's bigger than this list.
Me too.
Because this building is dangerous. It isn't just dangerous because people can get into it. It's dangerous because weather can get into it and all sorts of other things. And if there's a hope that this thing can survive for 10 years, you see what it's gone from in 2006 to 2012. Now, we're going to let it sit there for another 10 years with windows boarded up. We need to have something more than that. They need to meet with the dangerous building inspector, and he needs to tell them what they need to do to it to make it not a dangerous building. He's ruled it's a dangerous building. The ordinance that we have really tells us what we should do with this. And if we're not going to proceed that way, then there seems to me to be something else that has to happen other than it needs to be boarded up.
And I don't...
Well, I've been sitting here, listening to this whole thing, and I just, I'm quite amazed that all the correspondence has been received except for the letter of July 11th. Supposed to believe that. Suppose I will. We have a hearing officer. We have a building inspector who has said that this property is dangerous. Even if he agrees to do everything, are we going to be going through this every year? Are we going to be going through this for the next 10 years? We're talking about 10 years. You know, people buy properties that houses are in this kind of condition, and they buy these properties with the thought of taking the house down and starting over again, because it's economically better to do that for that individual. Some houses in some conditions are not savable. We have professional people telling us that that's the situation with this house. And I think that this gentleman has to make a hard choice here, and that is that he should, I mean, he should take this building down. Now, out of compassion, out of compassion, I will go along with what Bill has suggested to give him until the end of the year to comply to making this house safe, or this building safe. But I will only do that, and I will only support that, if in the motion, there's an automatic deadline and the house comes down if it's not. I'm not going to go through this again. This is the way I feel about it. So in other words, if you make a motion to give him until the end of the year to do this, and he does not comply to it, we already have the motion in place to take it down. That's the only way I will agree to this, because we have been talking about this for a long time, not just the last two weeks. And you're going to be talking about this for the next 10 years, because we're doing the wrong thing. That house should be taken down, and it's unfortunate. I've had people in my own family go through this. I've had people in my own family who have lost their home because they've lost their job. It's a terrible situation for all of us. But sometimes you have to make the hard decision. And he may have to do that, because it might be better for him to start over again with his 40 acres of property. I'm sure the mortgage company's going to love the idea of taking that house down, because if the township doesn't, he doesn't, they probably will. Because they're responsible for it, too. If somebody gets hurt in that house, they're going to sue him. They're going to sue the township. They're going to sue the mortgage company. They sue everybody. You know that. I just think we're passing the buck again, but I'm willing to do that out of compassion until the end of the year. After that, I think it should be automatically in the motion to take that house down. If he doesn't comply to it. If he complies, look fine. Then we have a, we have a Band-Aid on the solution for another year or two. And then we're going to be talking about it again. That's, that's my own opinion on it.
It does, and that is what I'm recommending, that the deadline is the deadline and that the next step is also defined in this motion, if it pleases the board.
We can take the existing motion that is, and instead of adding 60 days, give a date certain...
Come to the end of the year.
December 31st.
And put it as a date certain. That's well in advance of the 60 days beyond the, what's in our ordinance, correct?
Yeah, the existing motion is specific to no longer allowing for rehabilitation. It specifically just gets right down to demolishing. I was starting to try to wordsmith the motion.
Why don't you wordsmith that? And I think I could support what Joe's talking about.
I can.
Well, the only thing is, Joe, I mean, if we basically change this motion to read that they comply with the dangerous building hearings officer's letter of August or July, whatever it was, that letter says that they have to get permits for demolition or...
Rehabilitation.
Rehabilitation. And they're not offering that. I don't think the board is saying that, thinking he's saying that. So, I mean, we have to have something else in that motion. That's all I'm getting at. If we're going to go that route...
What you're saying is, is it's not enough to be, to secure those items. He's made a finding that the building has to either come down or be rehabilitated.
Well, I understand that. Who'd say how long a building can sit boarded up? I lived in Lansing for three years, and there's buildings all that are half burned down. Nobody does a damn thing about them.
Well, hopefully, we're not taking our lead from Lansing. But...
There's buildings around here that are half torn down, and there's no...
Anyways, we have an ordinance, and we're following through with what our ordinance says. So, I'm trying to come to a resolution, excuse me, I'm trying to come to a resolution that can work. You've already said that you're not going to be rehabilitating it, or...
Within a year.
Excuse me, can I finish?
But you're not saying that.
Order.
I mean, I'm trying to come to a resolution that they can comply by the end of the year. They can't comply with tearing it down or...
Remodeling.
Remodeling it. They're saying they can't. So if we want to allow this to continue there till they can do that, our motion needs to be different than complying with the zoning or the dangerous building hearing officer's recommendation. That's all I'm doing.
Because that's just fully demolished and all debris.
When we asked for the extension two weeks ago, we asked for you to get with your family and to make a decision to tear it down or to refurbish it. That's the same, that's the same thing that's here. That's what's on the table. You have, to follow, he needs to start, he needs to follow what the dangerous building ordinance elements have to say. That's, that's what I'm recommending. It's more than, it's more than boarding it up.
But it's not a certain dangerous building, it's more than...
Sure, that's why we have a person within our organization that makes that determination. I don't know what's dangerous and what's not dangerous.
Well, then I'd like to meet with them in person.
I think that's what's on the table.
If the, now, I believe what I was talking about before was a consensus around the July 11th memo. The order was July 24th. July 11th is a memo from the planning department to the dangerous building hearing officer. Now, in that, the outcome is probably the same of what you're raising, because it raises a number of issues that we seem to have indication there is no intent to follow through on. I mean, first of all, being the condition of the house's roof is the very first bullet item on it.
The goal, that, what we're trying to do is have this be not a dangerous building. Whatever that is.
Well, according to, and to follow up on an earlier point by Clerk Hopkins, the dangerous building hearing officer has rendered their opinion. There really isn't more conversation to be had with the hearing officer. He's looked at it and has determined that it either needs to be demolished or a full refurbishment to a certificate of occupancy needs to happen. And we, I have not heard anything that would tell me that those are the direction we're going. The board has at its discretion to modify its finding of that officer to something different. Just, we can't expect to have further conversation when the officer has rendered their opinion, says that there isn't a reasonable salvageability here, that they either fully rehabilitate that, or it's demolished. That there isn't really any reasonable, because certainly, and we all know, Mr. Summerfield, if there was a reasonable in-between, he would have tried to find a way to get there.
Okay. Any other discussion tonight?
I think, just so I'm clear, further discussion, what are we approving? I mean, the issue...
The letter that was stated needs to be complied.
But that, but that doesn't get rid of the dangerous condition.
Yeah, it did.
It just states what's wrong with it.
It states what's wrong with it.
But the...
So he has two choices. Either demol, the building has been declared to be by our building inspector or enforcement inspector to either be rehabilitated or demolished.
I agree.
Okay. It's been considered a dangerous building. What that requires is either get a permit to demolish it, or a permit to rehabilitate it.
I agree.
Okay. Are you giving, is your suggestion, you're going to give them until the end of the year to apply for that, or...
To start more?
I don't, I don't know what, what you want to do, because...
The application would have to be in before the end of the year to, to start the reconstruction of it, to get the plans and everything else, if that's what their goal is.
I, I don't...
Already told us that isn't his.
That isn't his goal. All he wants to do is...
That's that individual's choice.
But you're missing the, I think I'm missing something. The list is a list depicting it as a dangerous building. It's not enough simply to board up and, you know, cut the grass.
I agree.
Right.
There's a, the list is more than just boarding up the windows. We've mentioned that several times tonight.
Okay. I'm just trying to understand what I'm, what I'm going to agree to, which is, I'm either going to move to approve the hearing officer's order July 24th and give the property owner 60 days, or to the end of the year, to demolish the building, or pull a permit to rehab it. Is that, is that what you're, you want to do?
That's what the letter states.
Then, can we do that?
You can do that. If you look at the agenda memo itself for this item, there are some practical considerations in the last paragraph you may want to consider. Certainly, they can pull a land use permit to, to, you know, begin the process of a, well, either demolition or, or a rebuild. The practical issue is that in theory, that could take, they have, you know, up to 12 to 14 months in order, time in order to which to follow through on that land use permit. And it'd be, I think, one, we have reason to question whether the intent would actually be there, even if a land use permit were acquired, and if it is not followed through with, you know, that amount of time. Another condition you could apply is a deadline by which a certificate of occupancy might have to be...
I'll make, here's what I'm going to do. I'm going to make a motion that the owner secure the house by boarding it up and apply for a land use permit within 60 days, in which case, he has 14 months from now to rehabilitate the property or demolish the property. Can we do that?
If it pleases the board, yeah.
Is the motion on the table?
Support.
Support, discussion?
Just, I think, I want to make it clear...
I want, I want the applicant to understand the motion.
Exactly.
The, the...
I mean, what it's basically saying is, is what we thought we were going to get in two weeks, which was an application for a land use permit or a demolition permit. We're giving you 60 days to pull one of those permits, in which case, you will have 14 months to comply, but he still has to secure the building. Isn't that what we're talking about?
Yeah, that's what I heard, yeah.
And so, part of the condition of this is, is that the building is secured consistent with the building, our building inspector or enforcement officer.
Right, and he's willing to meet me out there and tell me anything?
Yeah. I mean, we can do that. Can, can we do that, Dave?
You can't. We may have to define the word secure. What is the board's intent in that? I mean, is it, are we just literally covering openings with, you know, secure wood, or are we trying to address other issues that have been brought up regarding the porches or any of those things?
No, I think it's...
Just securing the openings?
Just securing the openings. I think that's what we want, because if he has to do any, if he's going to pull a land use permit, he is going to have time to, he's going to have to do all the things that were acquired on the building codes and, and the township, right? And if he's going to demolish it, why spend the money on stuff that, to do the repairs if, that would be otherwise required, right? I mean, doesn't that make sense?
So you get a year after you get the land use permit?
He gets basically a year. He's getting 60 days plus a year, which gives him 14 months. So...
So can we give a date certain to that?
That's what, because the only thing missing from that, in order to follow through according to what the dangerous building ordinance requires, because if, if one of the possible outcomes is demolition, we have to specify that here and give that date. And so, really, what I'm hearing is then a date certain by which there's a C of O and/or demolition is complete. demolition is complete. At that point, if either of those two conditions aren't met by date certain, and if that's 12 months or 14 months from now, then that triggers the next step in the Dangerous Building Ordinance that moves towards demolition.
So, it's a motion?
You wrote a motion to have the owner board up and apply for a land use to reconstruct or demolish by blank date, achieving a certificate of occupancy or demolition.
Just put it by December 31st, 2013?
Fifteen.
No.
No, no, no.
He wants the permit pulled within 60 days.
Right.
Which then the permit will be good for 12 months after that.
So, it'd be like November 16th of 2015? Is that right? Or 14th, 14th, right?
But the permits have to be pulled.
Yeah.
So, it's a motion to modify the Hearing Officer's order, setting November 16th for the application of permits for either a repair or demolition, demolition of the structures, that the property owner shall meet with the Enforcement Officer to secure the building by boarding up, I mean, windows, I mean, what do we, what do I-
Openings to the structure.
Openings to the structure.
Achieve a certificate of occupancy or demolished by November 16th, 2014.
If they work up on that porch, they're going to fall through. That's the, see, the problem is not just getting in the building, as we discussed.
That's a solid concrete porch.
Pardon me?
It's a solid concrete porch.
It is a concrete porch?
Yes, sir. It's a back porch on the south end, it's not, that's all wood. And that's solid, that's not, that wasn't built by a couple of years before it was, that's all solid still, two by sixes. Was treated long.
Okay. I just want to make sure the motion's clear, so the Board can decide it, and that the property owners, owner understands what he needs to do. Essentially, what we're telling him to do, which is what we thought we were going to have two weeks ago, was some sort of land use permit pulled, or demolition permit pulled for the structures. Because of his situation down in Alabama, we're going to give him 60 days, which puts him at a time when he should be here, around November. He can come in and submit the application and pull whatever permits he decides, because I suspect he's going to come up here and probably decide that it's perhaps better to demolish this.
No.
But maybe not. I don't know. But he'll have a year from that, from that date, November 16th, to complete and-
Certificate of occupancy.
Certificate of occupancy.
Or full demolition.
Why is that important to be the CEO, knowing that he still has to stay in Alabama to make money, to support his family? If the building gets brought back up to codes, why do you got to go from OC?
Well, that's the nature of the fact that it's a Dangerous Building. It's either got to be demolished or brought up to code.
There you go. Now, that's different. You're going to get a CEO, just bringing it up to code?
Yes.
We shouldn't get into determining, I mean, a C of O doesn't mean you have to live there. It just means it's fit for occupancy.
It's a proxy for finding that the building is now safe.
He could run it.
He could run it. Do I need to repeat the motion?
No, we got it on tape.
And then, you still second to it?
Yes.
So, I have a motion on the floor that's support. Need discussion?
Yeah.
I have a question for David. Going back to your memo, just a second, from July before the Hearing Officer, you've sent a memo to them requesting action. Do you recall that? Pardon me while I find the right one. Here it is.
No.
It's a memo that you wrote dated July 11th.
Yes.
In that document, you asked for three specific things. You recommended, it's the recommendation of the Planning Department, that the Hearing Officer make the following determination. Number one, that the principal residence and the detached garage are Dangerous Buildings as defined by our ordinance. That has been determined to be true on both counts. Secondly, the Planning Department recommended back in mid-July, that the building shall be demolished or otherwise made safe and properly maintained in a manner, and within a timeframe that's determined by the Hearing Officer. And then, thirdly, if the owner or the agent fails to comply with our resolution, then the other actions that are permitted under the ordinance would proceed. How did we get from that to where now we have a motion on the floor that says the building must be demolished within 14 months?
So, this memo was drafted in anticipation of a, a hearing before the Hearing Officer, Mr. Summerfield. Those are our recommendations as staff to Mr. Summerfield. What his determination was after having that hearing with, with Mr. Them, who we brought in on, on conference call, was the order that he drafted dated July 24th. In Mr. Summerfield's July 24th order, he followed our recommendations, or at least the intent of them, in saying that the building has to be secured with sheathing from the outside by August 5th. And further, a month after August 5th, September 5th, the property owner is to apply for a land use permit to either take the building, to demolish the building, or a land use permit to rehabilitate the building. Mr. Summerfield's order goes on to say that if the building is not secured to his satisfaction by August 5th, then the Township should proceed to the enforcement hearing, which is what we're having here this evening. Mr. Summerfield then drafted a letter subsequent to that dated August 13th, where it was his determination that his order of July 24th was not adhered to, that the building was not secured from the outside with sheathing to his satisfaction. And his recommendation was that the Township Board proceed with a enforcement hearing. That enforcement hearing-
What was the date of the last document you mentioned?
August 13th. So, Mr. Summerfield issued an order dated July 24th, and then he issued a notice of noncompliance with that order dated August 13th.
But, but two weeks ago at this meeting, the House Owners' representatives indicated that they had started and nearly finished all that boarding up of the windows and the openings.
The difference in the work that was done and what Mr. Summerfield wanted to see done was, the boarding was not done from the outside. That was one of the key differences. And there were multiple openings that were left open to the elements. And it was because those openings were left open, and because of the sheathing was not, and keep in mind that the sheathing on the inside of the building was there prior to the Dangerous Building Hearing. So, one of the discussions with, with Mr. Them was that sheathing has to now be on the outside to protect the glass. That was not done, and some of those openings on the outside of the building, some were covered up, some were not. So, it was the determination of Mr. Summerfield that his order of July 24th was, was not complied with.
And we determined at the September 3rd meeting that further securing had taken place between this August 13th letter and the September 3rd meeting. Further work had been done.
So, what I'm trying to determine is our greatest concern about a Dangerous Building that was not made undangereous? Or is it the fact that the building is so, in such poor shape and condition now, that it really needs to be torn down? I'm asking this because I'm not an expert in our ordinance, but I think that our ordinance was probably written for those situations where the owner has left the site and just, you know, it's not even around. At least here, we have an owner who is speaking to us tonight, indicating his willingness to work with us. What we have to decide as a Board is whether we can allow a building in poor condition, and if it's not, you know, some money put into it soon, it's going to continue to deteriorate and may get to the point where it cannot ever be rehabilitated. Or whether we feel that the most important thing is to just demolish and be done with it. That's really, I see where, what we have to decide.
And-
Yes?
I'm sorry. I, maybe if I hear your question right, question is, you know, I think speaks to the, the nature of our recommendation, is that why we are recommending to just go ahead and order the demolition at this point, is that all things considered, and I think the Board has heard a lot of that, we don't have any reason to believe that 12 or 14 months from now, that a proper rehabilitation will take place. If the Board chooses to give that amount of time, that's fine, and I hope by all means I'm wrong on this. We just have no reason to believe that that will take place in there. So, we had no reason to recommend allowing further time when the condition will have not been improved. If the Board chooses to go, that's fine. It just wasn't our recommendation.
Do you have another question, Matt?
So, Dave, you are indicating then that it's the opinion of the Planning Department you've changed since you wrote the original July 11th recommendation to the Hearing Officer? At that point, it sounded like the Planning Department would be satisfied if the building was, could be classified as undangereous. I don't even know if that's a word, but I made it up.
Safe.
Be safe.
It was the determination of, it was staff's opinion, that it was a danger, that it met the criteria of a Dangerous Building prior to Dangerous Building-
I don't think anybody disagrees with-
It's, it's up to the Hearing Officer to confirm that determination. He did so in his July 24th order. The recommendation of staff, again, I, I find to be consistent with what was ultimately in the order, which is either the, the building needs to be made safe within a reasonable amount of time, which his determination was it would be made safe by, at least in the interim, by boarding up from the outside by August 5th. And further, either application submitted to demolish or rehab the building by September 5th. The first deadline being the key one, the August 5th one, and it was the determination of the Hearing Officer that that deadline came and went, and the, the progress that was made was not consistent with, with his order. So, then the Hearing Officer, which is within his authority to do, said, because that deadline was not met, is my recommendation that this proceed to an enforcement hearing, at which point, it's, it's under the Board's authority to determine what to do.
But has the Hearing Officer been back since August?
I, I don't know that, Mr. Summerfield has been back since August 13th. What I can tell you is that our Code Enforcement Officer, Mr. Savoni, has visited there regularly. He visited there on September 3rd when we had the enforcement hearing, and he visited there today. And he notes that a number of the issues in Mr. Summerfield's August 13th letter, Notice of Noncompliance, are still not resolved.
He let the doors on on the outside.
On the outside, and there's, there's openings. The door on the second floor with the windows within the door.
And, and just so I'm clear, because this has been going on for a while now, but it's my understanding that the owner and his representatives have indicated a willingness to meet with the appropriate staff and, and officers to clarify what needs to be done to make the building, declare it safe.
They have. And with all due respect to them and their situations, they made the same assurances in 2011.
Right. I understand that.
I, I can't help but pointing out though, Matt, that the motion on the table does not allow for that.
I understand that. That's why I want to make sure that we're saying you've either got to soak money into the house to make it inhabitable now?
demolish it or rehab it, and you got to be done by doing either of those two things by November 17th, 2014.
Right.
There's no making it undangereous in the midterm, kind of.
That's an option I'm throwing out there, but it's not in the current motion. I understand that. I would be hesitant to support the motion that's on the table until we hear back from the mortgage company, just because I think that our actions, and it may not have any bearing, but just from my own personal knowledge, our actions would be harming, if you will, what they have invested interest in. Granted, the land may be worth more than the house, but someone's going to pay that bill, and it's not going to be Heartland Township. It's going to be tacked on to the homeowner and its mortgage company and whoever else. So, I, I think it would be wise for us-
Excuse me. Can I break in for a second?
Yes, sir.
Can you hear it from me? If you hear back from the mortgage company before I hear back from the mortgage company, and they say that we can demolish that house, we can tear that house down and not affect my mortgage at all, I will consider that. I will work with you in that capacity, but until I hear from the mortgage company, I can't. I will go half far with you.
I think that Matt's-
Regardless of whether I want to live there or not.
Your suggestion is good.
If the mortgage company tells me I can demolish that house, and then it won't take my whole property because of it, because the mortgage's on that house and 10 acres, then I gladly agree with you. I'll build a new house when I move back up there. I would like to redo that house. I would like to live in that house. It has a lot of sentimental value. I mean, I grew up in that house. My grandparents own that house. But if the mortgage company allows me to do that, and I come up in November and I look at the house and decide it's not in my best interest to restore it, but to start from scratch, and the mortgage company allows that, then we'll pursue that route.
And, but-
As a first-
I'll consider that as an option.
It's the first common sense discussion that I've heard tonight, because I think he's on the right track there. And I think, Matt, you're on the right track too, that we need to hear from the mortgage company what their intention are, is, as well. But I would think that this gentleman here, Mr.-
Them.
Them? Is, is on the right track now, where if he's, if he comes up here and decides that, and I, and I would suggest talking to our Building Inspector, talking to our Building Department, talking to the Hearing Officer, talk to as many people as you can, so you can make a, a educated decision on whether or not it's economically feasible for you to put any money into that structure at all, and then decide what you want to do based on what the mortgage company says. I think that'd be a good, a good way to go. And I don't think, and I think what Matt said, as far as the Township is concerned, we should not do anything either until we know what the mortgage company's going to say.
Go ahead, Glenn.
I, I think it would be a good idea to move forward with, with the motion, because no matter what the mortgage company decides, if they decide to tear it down, he's still going to have to get the permit to do that. If they decide something else, we still have to take action, all right? And I, I think that this may cause the mortgage company to make a decision, it may cause the homeowner to make the decision. He's got 60 days. We're already indicated that eight business days from now, we're going to hear back from the mortgage company. That's still plenty of time to make a decision, instead of us rehashing this again at another meeting. I think this has gone, you know, there's a, a solid motion on the floor here, and, and I think that the decision by the mortgage company would fall right into what we expect to happen. And they've got 60 days, and we're going to know within eight days what they want.
And we will provide a copy of the order too. The more, I mean, we have contacts of them, even though we haven't been successful engaging in a dialogue, we'll at least give them a copy of it. I would think that would get their attention, and hopefully, these things would take place.
The actual mortgage servicing company also said that if we were having problems, that we might contact him, and he might be able to help you too, David, so I can give you that tomorrow.
When does Mr., the property owner, expect to be up here again?
When you come back on. November.
November.
Around Thanksgiving time.
Let's pass 60 days.
Yeah, it's passed, yeah, it's passed 60 days. I just want to bring that up in case we want to modify-
November 30th.
That 60th.
I thought originally it was supposed to be the end of the year.
Well, that's not the motion that got made. That's all I'm pointing out.
Well, the motion can be changed.
It says November 16th. They could change it to November 30th.
Would you change it to the end of the year, Joe?
Where there's Thanksgiving.
28th of November.
Can we make it to 15th, December 15th? Because he's going to need-
Did you support December 15th?
I'm suggesting, if it's okay with Joe.
He said he would support, he would say he'd support that. So we'll change it to December 15th.
And the final date, 24th?
I had to come up with a date there with what I can understand. You're breaking out a little bit. Can you make it through the end of December? I will be up there in November, but when I go to, we go back to Birmingham with my wife, and she has to have surgery or something, I don't want to say, well, jeez, I can't make it up there for Thanksgiving. I will be up there in November. That is our plan as of right now. If I can't make it by November, I will definitely be up there. I will make a special trip up there just to deal with this.
Rick, you're saying that by December 15th, you have to have a land use permit to either rebuild or tear down.
By November 15th?
December 15th.
December.
That gives you all November to come up, and then by the 15th, you have to have paperwork saying that we've got-
Have to have an application for land use permit.
Rebuild or to tear down? Yes.
And then-
Now, what about the dangerous building part?
You're going to meet with, with our people here, our staff here, and go over that entire list so you can make a decision?
When?
Which, as soon as you get up here, I would think, unless you want to do it via Skype, I don't know what-
Does he contact?
He would contact Dave Campbell. I'm sure you could do that via conference call also.
And then we'd all just meet in here with Rick?
Yep. He'd set it up with, so he can have the appropriate other people here.
So when you come up in November, we get ahold of David Campbell, and then all the board, David Campbell, and all the other appropriate people who have made decisions in this would be here also, and you.
Okay.
But you, my, my personal opinion is that you should start the process before you get here.
You hear that?
You can Skype in like you're doing right now, and then you'll start the dialogue, because December 15th is going to come pretty quick.
Right.
Yeah, I would contact your mortgage company now and tell them what their, your intentions are.
I have been, and it's been sold again, and I haven't heard from the new people yet. I keep, it keeps going back and forth. I contact this one, they said, no, we ain't got it. This one over here's got it. I contact them, well, we haven't got all the paperwork yet. It's not processed yet. I'm still getting the runaround. I'm trying to get to the bottom of it sooner or later. Somebody's got to tell me.
Right, that's why we've suggested start sooner than later.
I can't make them go any faster than you guys can.
Okay, any other discussion this evening?
We've got to vote.
Yeah, no, we do.
I just wanted to point out that the recommended motion by staff also included some outbuildings, some debris on the property. I mean, does, do we want to address any of that in this motion or not? I'm just throwing it up there. I mean, I, I think we should get the debris, I mean, taken care of. I mean, it's light, are we just going to let it remain there?
Can we add a sentence that's basically saying that have the debris cleaned up by the end of the year?
I just wanted to, I just wanted to point it out.
That's a good point.
What you want to do with it is up to you. I just wanted to point it out.
I, I think that's reasonable, in light of the fact we're giving a lot more time than we have had, than technically the ordinance provides. So I would agree with that, adding that sentence.
Do you support that?
Yes.
May I request that the motion on the floor be reread for clarity purposes? Mr. Clerk.
Okay, here's what I got.
Do we need a break before we continue?
Move to approve modification to the hearing officer order of July 24th, 2013, giving the property owner of 12500 Reed Road by December 15th to apply for and be granted a land use permit to demolish or rehabilitate the house, and to further state that the home be either demolished or have received a certificate of occupancy by December 15th, 2014.
God bless you.
And then, based on that discussion-
And to clean up the property with, by December 15th.
By December 15th.
By the end of the year.
Right.
Remove the debris.
Okay. Any other discussion?
James, I just have a question for James. You heard that motion. Do you feel that's clear to act upon if those timelines, or does the motion need to state what's going to happen if those timelines aren't met? Does the order say what's going to happen?
I think that's clear.
Okay.
There's no other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, our next item is 8B, resolution to partially vacate special assessment Forest Brook Hills. Manager Wickman, this has to do with the septic cleanup.
Well, the connection to the system and abandonment of their septic, good news is that we did in fact have some cost savings that we were hoping for, and the net result of that is we're able to reduce the assessments by just shy of $2,200 per property owner. This resolution would carry that out, and we'd do that in time before their very first, they receive their first assessment bill.
I don't see a, I'm trying to find it here, the resolution number.
With the new system, we don't assign those beforehand.
Right.
So it's simply the motion is-
Is it, is it roll call vote?
It would be a resolution, yeah. It's just a motion to approve the resolution, and you can give a title or a short version of the title.
A move to approve resolution to partially vacate special assessment included on the special assessment role for Forest Brook Hills, sewer improvements, special assessment role number one, and other matters related thereto.
Second.
A motion by Clerk Hopkins, second by Treasurer Horning. Is there any discussion? Being none, I'll have a clerk please call the roll.
Supervisor Fountain?
Yes.
Clerk Hopkins, yes. Treasurer Horning?
Yes.
Trustee Kalani?
Yes.
Trustee Germaine?
Yes.
Trustee Harper?
Yes.
Trustee Petrucci?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. Item number 8C is Settlers Park Change Order. This is to install a detention, retention basin at the end of the parking lot. There's a drawing in the, in the packet, and it would be basically directly north of the existing parking lot to take care of the water issues with the installation of the limestone parking lot.
A move to authorize Supervisor to sign Change Order Number 16 for Settlers Park and approve a budget amendment for the same, including an additional amount up to $11,000 for engineering permits and appurtenances. Support?
Motion by Trustee Kalani, second by Trustee Harper. Any discussion?
James, there was something that you sent out yesterday that was the actual quote. I just think it's a little unclear in this motion. It had like a $55,000 price tag to it.
Yeah.
$11,000 here is just for engineering permits.
Because we didn't have time to actually put together a change order that you'd be approving, I think it'd be appropriate to add to the motion the amount not to exceed, which was the $59,379.20. We're still working on reducing that, and we believe we'll be successful in that. That we're still between the county, the engineer, and the contractor, working on things that we can keep those costs down.
So it's a-
The change order is not to exceed that dollar amount.
$59,000, how much?
And then the remainder of that motion would be the same, because the rest of that are the other costs not related to the pond.
So replace $11,000 with $59, no?
No, in addition to 11.
You'd like $90,000?
$70,000.
Or 70.
70.
I'm not making that motion.
That's the detention.
Why are we?
That's a retention.
Should we not wait for the engineering to be complete before we authorize a change order to the contractor?
Yeah, so I expected more discussion before we got to a motion. So we, a couple of reasons. Obviously, time is a bit of the essence. We understand there is a condition there that is not acceptable. Unfortunately, we've had some unusually heavy rainfall events in the last few weeks that have exacerbated that. Our effort is to try to work through those issues as quickly and as reasonably as possible. What you have in front of you is an estimate of the worst-case scenario at this point, because that's what we could get for tonight. While we're result, and the engineer has reviewed these numbers and agrees that as the current scope is defined, that these costs are appropriate, and they're still working on narrowing that scope down, down, working with the county in doing so. So we could wait. We just have equipment over there now. They're mobilized. They're ready to go. The engineers are ready to go, the county is. And we're losing construction season, and we hate for further rain events to cause more problems. That's all. If the board prefers to wait until we have engineering tied up or a perfect number, then we can do that. Our recommendation is to move forward with this.
I just think that although I know time is important, I'm not sure I'm going to like what the engineer designs. Detention ponds can be many different shapes, sizes, and depths, and I've already read that they're anticipating taking down a number of trees to construct it. So I think that the township made a mistake months ago without getting the proper engineering done at the time, and I'm hesitant to authorize contractor to go and start building until I know what's going to be done. I understand why it came to this, you know, situation that we're in, and I think the engineers should be authorized to begin work. I wouldn't support authorizing the contractor until we get some more details. If that means we need to call a special meeting to make it happen sooner than-
I would go along, I have to agree with that perspective. If we have to call a special meeting, that's fine. But let's, let's see what the design and what it's going to take, and I think that hopefully our engineers will put their pencils and the paper to kind of minimize those costs in the best way they can.
That's certainly what they're charged with.
Yep.
So can someone remind me what the motion is again?
Motion is as it was originally read.
It's just for the $11,000 engineering fee.
Right.
It approves Change Order Number 16. You just aren't holding a change order. What you have is an estimate that would be put into the form of a change order. That's why I was suggesting if you wanted to modify or deny the motion or-
Change Order 16 should be deleted, because that's to the, directed to the contractor, not to the engineer.
Correct.
Okay. So move to authorize and approve a budget amendment up to $11,000 for engineering permits and appurtenances related to the detention pond for Settlers Park, or stormwater detention
Just to make sure it's clear, some of the appurtenances are related. There's some parking blocks, there's trash cans and some other things, but it's not all just related to stormwater. Anybody support that?
I will.
I have a motion by Trustee Kalani.
It was actually-
Second by-
There was always a motion and a second.
Second by Glenn.
So he just amended it. I think he did for Glenn to-
It sounded like a completely different motion to me, but I'll support that. You still support it? Right. Any other discussion? Being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. Motion carries. Okay, I have no new business this evening. Go to board reports. We are in our first meeting, or second meeting in September. Second meeting in September, and we start with Trustee Petrucci.
Couple of things. The teen center opened on time, and we are hosting about 35 teens per day. It's moving along just great. We do have an open house this Saturday from 10 to 2, and that'd be during Heritage Days. So everybody that, anybody that wants to come out and see the teen center, welcome to do that. It's open house between 10 and 2 on Heritage Day, and I hope to see you there. That's all I have.
Thank you. Clerk Hopkins?
Well, just a reminder, Heritage Day this Saturday, the 21st, from 10 until 4 down in the village area of Heartland.
Thank you. Treasurer Horning?
Nothing this evening.
Trustee Kalani?
Nothing this evening.
Trustee Harper?
Nothing.
And Trustee Germaine?
Could you go into more details about what the township's going to do at Heritage Day?
I believe we have a grant at 9:30. Is that still on our program, the rip and cutting here?
9:30 here, and then we'll go right after that over to Hero Center for the sign and the naming recognition.
So we're doing the park opening here at 9:30?
At 9:30 here, and then we'll go to the teen center.
And then we'll have a presence down in the village with the tent, and we'll be highlighting, you know, obviously some of the parks, projects that have happened, and we'll have information for public input, starting off on regarding roads, pathways, the safer roads and pathways initiative. And I think we'll also share, be something there maybe about the village plan. I'm not 100% sure on that quite yet.
And the Hero Center is also going to be open that day to the public to come and see the teen center?
That's what George said.
That's what I just said.
George said.
Not the teen center, but the Hero Building.
And then I would also ask Mr. Wickman that you follow up with Bob regarding some of the concerns that the Hero Board had with the building. I think I copied you on that email, I'm not sure.
I don't know that I've seen that, but I have certainly follow up.
There, there are minor issues. We're just trying to solve the maintenance activities and things like that.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. I have nothing this evening. Go to managers report.
In the interest of time, I'll just take questions. I think there's some number of things worthy of mentioning, but they're from the operational reports, but does the board have any questions?
I have a question for you. The signs, they're supposed to be landscaped by the 21st.
We've been told that.
Is that, well, is there any way we can try to reinforce that, so we have them done before Heritage?
That's, we've been assured multiple times that's going to take place. I share your question on that.
I have a question. What about the old sign at the Hero Center?
That's also a part of the scope that was approved for the landscaping and the removal of that sign by Saturday.
Who's doing that work?
Bochamp.
In the interest of time, I think we're all out of questions.
James, I know it's early, but we do have a meeting in two weeks. Do you have a feeling what that agenda's going to look like at this point?
I think we'll be looking, we'll start the SWOT analysis discussion, so some-
That was my-
Work session type discussions.
Still have some debriefing of the retreat.
Yeah, that would be appropriate to lead into that with, if we want to postpone that.
That was my thought.
Yeah.
And then we'll try, at our next meeting, it'd be more work session elements and get caught up on that, because it really falls into strategic planning.
Yeah, those would be more, more tradition work session as we used to have.
There's nothing else this evening? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Harper, second by Trustee Germaine. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, those opposed nay. Motion carries.